Okay.
Are we here? If we got everybody.
Everyone's here.
All right, let's, let's go live. There we go. All right, let's give it a moment for the attendees to come in. It just takes a minute. Okay.
Right.
Take it away.
Started, like to call to order the January 25th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. First tonight, I'd like to approve the minutes from the January 11th meeting. Is there a motion? Sherry, second, Deanna, all in favor? Okay, next is to review and approve our agenda for this evening. Motion? Jen, second, Penny, all in favor? Okay. Comments from the public, to ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. And if there's anyone wishing to address the board, please use the raise hand feature. I see that someone is there and Dr. Lutz will move you over. I think you're on mute.
I am, I apologize. It's, uh, you may, we may get some dog barking in the background from time to time. Let me see here, James, I believe you can now speak.
All right, thank you.
There you go.
I guess we're at it, we're back again. I just want to make some kind of things clear. Maybe you've, uh, the board and the administration can make it clear for me. Is there, I don't believe that this plan is, um, any different from the plan that was submitted last year. I know you guys, you can't respond, but it might help, uh, I guess the people out there to know that this, if this plan has changed significantly, what those changes are. And if it has not changed at all, I think they'd like to know that as well. And I think some of the issues we have with this plan is, I, I mean, I, I think you heard all through last year. So I think some of our concerns remain, um, because the plan remains the same. One of the differences this year is, and again, I know you can't respond, but I, I think the budget this year is up 5.3% from last year. Now acknowledge that that much of that is due to COVID. So outside of that, I, I don't know what the increase is, but saving a million dollars should definitely help bring that down. Now, I know you have it listed as $460,000, but correct me if I'm wrong, that's just splitting it between one year and the other. The price tag remains the same, does it not? Uh, again, I, I know you can't respond, but that, if you made that clear, that would help as well. Price tag is change or not change. The plan is changed or not change. If you would make that clear, I think a lot of people might be, might have a better idea of what, what this plan essentially is. The other thing is, I think members and admin have said that they want to hear what the people, what the community says, what, what parents are concerned about. But despite, despite, I guess, the surveys, petitions, it doesn't seem like we're being heard because again, this plan seems like the same plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, though, I, I, I would love to hear that the plan has changed some, but I don't believe it has. Now, I applaud Dr. Lutz, he mentioned that he was looking at some potential alternatives, maybe some block scheduling or, or some other alternatives that might help senior, uh, help high school students get more sleep. And I'm all in favor of that. That might be a much better option in that it saves potential harm, we feel, to, to the youngest learners in our community. In addition, it might be a fairly, a fairly cost-effective way to do something to allow high school students to get more sleep. I'm hoping that the board can kind of respond to some of the questions and clarify some of this, uh, in the discussion today. Let's see, uh, I just want to remind the board also that a number of towns is, okay, a number of towns, as you've indicated, have changed their schedules and none of those towns have done so at the expense of their youngest. Um, and with that, I appreciate your time and I hope to hear, uh, more greater clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. A little lower hand here and Jennifer is next. Okay, Jennifer, I, yep, you should be also.
I, thank you so much. It's been a while since I've seen everyone and it's wonderful to see everybody's faces. So I want to say first, thank you for the extraordinary job you've done. My children being in school are the delight of their day and ours. It is truly a gift. As I talk to friends across the country, um, as well as our neighboring towns that so, um, continuously, I'm a little less prepared today. So my words lose me, just very, um, consistent, thank you that, that we're in school. And it proves just how hard this board and the administration can tackle and works on complex issues. This is, um, beyond a, a difficult subject. And so it astounds me, we are still here. And from what I understand with the same start time solution that we've had a year ago, I understand there's been little time to think about it differently. But that we can solve that. And we've heard loud and clear that the health and wellbeing of our students, and that's all of our students. And Dr. Lutzie made that quite clear on one of the PTC calls recently, are number one, um, uh, at the front of, of what you do every day. And it's certainly been proven in this past year. Thank you, Dr. Lutzie, in one of the meetings, answering a question I had that the, that getting all students, uh, to school between eight and nine is 1.7 million. It's a number we hadn't heard and at least there's something to work from. So I appreciate being transparent about that. And that is without negotiations, RFPs and other things, that is approximately, I believe, 2% of our budget. It's about a net of 1% of our budget. So if we can do it, if we can truly deliver all our children the best start times from kindergarten on through between eight and nine, for 2% of our entire budget with a net of 1%, you're telling me we can't find, after what you have done this whole year, that 1%? I'm not saying our budget is the, the best use. If, I know there are a lot of detractors on, on the increases for this year, but just pointing out that if it's the health and wellbeing, um, we should be able to find it. The other towns having their budgets are no less complex. I've managed a budget this big. It is not easy, but it can be done, especially 1% across the rest. I just ask you to please go back and think about all the people who have written, who have called, the petitions, where we were with the budgets a year ago, and try to consider the health and wellbeing of all of our students, looking at the science that we have across all students. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will move on. Oh.
Yep, there's.
Anne just went up.
Okay, Anne, I think you're all set, although I believe you're on mute. There you go.
Hi, it's Anne Schimek and, um, I really, I guess, I just wanted to also say thank you for all you all have done. Um, for my family, our children, all of the students this year. It is really incredible how many days of in-person school we've had. And, um, honestly, it has just benefited my children tremendously. So I wanted to start by saying thank you. As you know, um, I definitely feel strongly about the start time issue. I am so thrilled it's in the budget this year. I know there are certainly differing opinions among elementary parents. I have two children still at South and, um, I feel that this is a great solution for them. Um, I wish, you know, it had been in place years ago, too. It certainly would benefit our teens. Um, and I just feel that it's well aligned with when everyone learns best. You know, the South students and the teachers we've heard from have definitely been supportive of that. The other thing I just wanted to specifically mention is, um, a good friend of mine, um, moved from New Canaan to Dover Sherburne, Massachusetts last year. They start their elementary at 7:50 so that their high school could start later. And it has been a great success. She has been thrilled to death. So I guess I just wanted to chime in and say, you know, there are other districts that have a schedule similar to what's been proposed. Um, and I really applaud the work that's been done for years and years. And I think, you know, to continually be asked to go back to the drawing board because it doesn't make everyone happy is a difficult situation. And at some point, you know, we just need to move forward with what we know, it follows the science and is best for the kids in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so reports and recognition. Well, tonight we have another COVID-19 update with Dr. Lutz, the cabinet and our guest, Mr. Gusich.
Yep, and Mr. Gusich should pop onto the screen in a moment. There he is, very good. Um, I'll give a, a brief update and then share the, uh, the sharing rights with Principal Gusich here, who will give us, uh, just a, a little more specific information about how things are going over at Saks and, uh, get a little window into, uh, into some of what the school day is like for, uh, for our students and staff over there. The, at a high level for us, today we began the hybrid plus at the high school, uh, which means that two thirds, I mean, three quarters of our students came into school and, uh, they will be in school 75% of the time instead of about 50% of the time. So we're increasing the density a little bit. We feel that this is the right time to do it, given the, uh, that our numbers have really trailed down since the week after the holidays. That week after the holidays, we, we were looking at a high number. We were just here in town, about 80 positive cases. Since the next week, though, we came down to the sixties. Last week it was only around the, in the thirties and this week, you know, we're off to a good start, too. So going remote worked for that peak, but now we've seen things going in the right direction here locally. So, uh, we made the decision to bring in hybrid plus and by all accounts, our students were very happy to be there. Uh, and so, again, instead of being in two groups, now they're in four and on two, two days at a time, we'll have students rotating out. So the students who did not come to school today will come in on, on Wednesday and then they'll be there for five days. Actually, six days and then out for two and how that works. So anyway, not, not to belabor the point, but we made that shift. It's working well. The other thing, uh, just as a reminder, the, the reason we structured our cohorts the way we did was to really limit cross exposures. And I mentioned before, I was just on with the DPH and the SDE talking about what they've been learning from some different, uh, case studies at schools around the state. And that cohorting, you know, continues to work, but it works best when you have a positive case in a cohort that you do quickly and instantly quarantine the close contacts within that cohort. Quarantining works, you know, so we're going to obviously continue using the system as we put it together and the strategies that we put together to keep everybody safe. The, the vaccine, as you know, we are watching closely with the timing of the rollout. The most recent information we have is they anticipate getting to the essential workers for one B in, uh, in March, in early March. So we're keeping a close eye on that. And, um, same goes with the, sorry about the dogs, same goes with the, uh, variants that we are learning about, the South Africa, what's going on in California, what the UK. DPH is watching that closely and they're going to continue to report out what they find. You know, it's the most strong recommendations and guidance from DPH continues to be strict adherence to the mitigation strategies. Implement them with fidelity strongly, do them, you know, devote yourself to getting this right. And that will help take care of, uh, things going in the wrong direction. We're doing that in our schools. We're going to keep doing it. Janet, Jen and others are a great team, so, uh, we continue on. And with that, Principal Gusich, I believe I gave you sharing rights to the screen. And, uh, why don't you give us a little bit of info about Saks?
Great, thank you. Let me just transition over here. And I'll go to my present button. Hopefully, there we go. All right, good evening to everybody and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and give you a quick COVID update. I know that I was just with you not too long ago, last month, as we went through the budget workshop. And, you know, I talked a little bit about the, certainly the challenges that have been part of this year. But we have so much to be proud of and grateful for. And, uh, you know, I'll talk a little bit about how we've continued to evolve and evolve and adapt to, uh, these difficult situations. I framed this quick overview through the lens of our five Cs, three of which you see at the top of the screen there. And, um, a lot of this is just going to show the, um, the growth that we have continued to make over the course of this year. Um, and that, you know, we continue to be at the forefront of what we do and how we're doing it. And that, you know, truly, uh, we feel very strongly that our students are exactly where they need to be. We couldn't be more grateful for the time that we've had with them in front of us, uh, in person, uh, with the in-person learning since going back to the beginning of the school year, with very few, uh, exceptions to that. Uh, and one example of some of the ways that we have been adapting, uh, we, we kicked off our, our first official virtual daytime open houses today. Uh, and they're off to a pretty good start and, uh, we're certainly learning as we go, but we've certainly received some positive parent feedback from that. Um, and, you know, I think a lot of what, uh, I'm going to share with you this evening is going to show that our planning for today is certainly helping us not only every step of the way now, uh, but into the future as we look at what, um, the ideal middle school is and how we can continue to maximize our students' experience here at Saks Middle School, uh, as we focus on each domain of the critical part of growth during the, the middle school year. So, um, again, I've used some pictures to help describe, uh, you know, the student experience here. And again, framing that under our five Cs, you could see at the top there, uh, top left, uh, are charter words, you know, continue to be a focal point for us. Our students have spoken and, uh, across the board, our student charter this year includes being comfortable, happy, included, respected and safe. And you'll see a shot of, uh, the signs that are going to be going up or have already been put up in every classroom in the building. Uh, and on the bottom left there is one of our, uh, health, actually fifth grade health class, including some of that social emotional work, which, uh, certainly is the foundation of all that what we do and is embedded in a lot of what we do, not only with our students, but with our staff as well. In terms of communication, uh, reference our daytime open houses, you could see here, this is actually an example from this morning. Uh, we try and say, stay as timely as possible. I was speaking with a teacher, uh, last week and she shared that she was going to be doing, uh, an interactive activity with our library media specialist. And this eighth grade language arts class, um, I was able to go in and, uh, view the students working on their projects. Uh, and this particular student happened to be, uh, in a breakout room, zooming with our library media specialist and talking about citations, talk about different resources. Uh, all while the rest of the class was continuing to work and the teacher was able to circulate, uh, and assist students. And there was a great breakout where students got to sign up for certain slots. They had that time, uh, and then they went back to their project and the next student stepped up to work with our, our, uh, library media professional. So just the one example there. Uh, on the right, you could see, you know, our commitment to all of the experiences for our students. Here is a quick shot of physical education and kicking off their official, uh, dance unit, which is well received by a lot of our students. Self admittedly, our teachers went out of their comfort zone this year and they, uh, produced their own video, uh, which were, they were very proud of. Uh, here's an example of them showing our students how they did it and then let them, uh, our students be creative to take off and come up with their own, uh, um, way to do that as well. And on the bottom right is our, um, one of our orchestra classes, you know, I'm very open and honest to them that I certainly have an untrained, untuned ear. But every time I hear them, I think it sounds wonderful and I always pop in, uh, to hear them, even when they're warming up and doing their scales. It's just wonderful to hear the sounds echoing down the halls and, um, you know, everybody has been so adaptive as they have made the best of the situation. Last but not least, in the middle, on the bottom, uh, I wanted to share that, you know, we're certainly continuing to be receptive to all of our learners. This happens to be one of our visually impaired students who, uh, over the weekend, our art teacher sent me a picture of this and showed me, uh, a new, uh, P, a new tool that was, uh, provided to our student where she's able to draw on what appears to be an Etch A Sketch there. But as she is drawing, uh, that, uh, whatever she draws then raises, so she's able to feel it in a sense of a braille, uh, through that drawing. And to see the teacher's face light up as she shared that experience for this student and, uh, us, you know, looking forward to seeing what that means for this student moving forward. Uh, you know, I'm sure that's something I'm going to be sharing out with you in the future as well. But, you know, these are things that we had not, uh, you know, even dreamed of in the past that are now really part of our, our daily operations here. As we go to our, um, last slide here and taking a look at celebrating our learning community. Uh, you know, this is something that, you know, a quick snapshot, one of our seventh grade social studies teachers, Mr. Divine there with one of his remote classes on a Zoom there, giving the thumbs up as they're all interacting, uh, with and amongst each other. Um, and then the one I want to close with on the right there is, um, our eighth grade orchestra class interacting on the smart board up front. You probably can't tell, but it's Mr. Fix over at the high school. It's a real-time, uh, integrated class where Ms. Dorfman and Mr. Fix, um, have their classes participating, playing together. And then they had an opportunity to do a Q and A with the high school students. So this, you know, the stuff we could have dreamed of in the past is now a reality. And it's one of the benefits that we get to have as we walk through the halls and see our students doing school, you know, really, uh, well every day. And, uh, it's something that each day is a gift and we're grateful for all of these opportunities that come along, uh, with the interaction and teaching and learning and growing and socializing that takes place with being in school in person. Uh, I certainly want to thank Dr. Dr. Lutz and the entire, uh, cabinet, as well as obviously the Board of Education for everything you have done to support. You know, what I just kind of shared with you in a, in a brief glimpse oversight or overview of, uh, you know, what it is to operate in the middle of a pandemic and, and still have our students, you know, really feeling like they're in school and learning and growing, uh, every single day. So with that, I will, I want a little bit longer than expected, but I certainly want to open it up to any questions that you may have. And, um, you know, I'll be happy to share anything more in depth that you'd like to hear about.
Questions or comments? Brendan.
Thanks, Dave. I thought that was excellent. Um, I guess just one question, um, do you get the sense that, it certainly seems like it based on your presentation, but do you get the sense that, um, the buy-in that you're getting from, uh, both students and faculty is going to be lasting from a technology standpoint? Um, you know, we're going to end up using some of the tools we're using this year going forward.
Absolutely, Brendan. Thank you for raising that question because, um, you know, one of the things we've talked about is the exponential growth that our staff has made, uh, through the professional learning, not only leading up to this school year, but on the, uh, weekly meetings that we have and, uh, the focus that we've had in the integration, um, of technology in every single aspect of school. You know, our, our team, uh, our tech integrators, our DTS team, uh, all of our tech staff has been critical and crucial in terms of that success. They have been available, they've pushed into classes, uh, they've obviously been the ones who have been, um, you know, critical in all of the training and professional learning that has taken place. But that has gotten us, gotten us to a point that it's not just getting us through what we're doing now. It is really created a new way to look at education in terms of how we're interacting, not only within amongst, uh, each other in school, similar to that, uh, eighth grade language arts, um, you know, screen on the first, first one, but also, uh, locally, regionally, nationally and globally, some of the things that we've been able to, um, you know, consider how things fit into our curriculum and the resources that we'll have, uh, have at our fingertips to be able to provide experiences for kids that we wouldn't have had before. So this is, this is just the tip of the iceberg and it's going to keep, uh, keep growing as we go through here. And it, it's only going to be, you know, we, I don't see us going back to how we were in any way, shape or form, to be perfectly honest.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
Jenny.
So, um, in terms of like our budgeting for next year, or maybe even, maybe you're, I'm looking past the year after that, when we get beyond the pandemic, what do you think, um, what ideas do you have so far that you think we need to do to continue this development and sort of expansion? So we don't sort of just go back to our old and lose all the momentum that we've had and then we're able to develop with our Wednesday afternoons?
So I'll start that and if, uh, certainly Dr. Lutz or Dr. Kurt, do you want to add in on any things that, um, would add to that? But, you know, I, I certainly feel as though some of the long-range planning that has already been put into effect, some of the technology needs that will help support the curriculum are going to be what we're going to continue to look at. So it's not about just getting, uh, tech and tools into the hands of our students. It's about getting the right tech and the right tools into the hands of our students at the appropriate level. So, uh, each grade level may have certain needs that, uh, align with and support the curriculum. And that's how we're going to continue to approach this, to make sure that the experiences our students have, um, not only support, are supported by the technology, but really enrich it and provide that deeper experience that they wouldn't be able to have without that technology.
I would simply add the, uh, you mentioned, you mentioned the professional learning that we've had, right? The opportunities to learn on Wednesdays. That's that learning, what's, what teachers are working on, they're applying right, right away, my next day or two. So they really are getting that they're learning and applying right away and this is a cycle of continuous growth. But the real sort of change will come, I think, it's the behavior first as they learn in the shiny ways. And then reflecting on that themselves and talking through and, and looking at how it all gets integrated and understanding that too. So we're, we're also through our teacher evaluation system and other things, looking at where do we, where do we embed the reflection? And the opportunity for our, our staff to really think about, you know, where I am now versus where I was before. Because we all, we're all in action mode, right? And if you're always in action mode, you're just jumping from one thing to the next, to the next. So we're, we're embedding reflection into the bracket. We always do in our evaluation, but we are, we're staying true to that, to, um, try to encourage folks to pause, take a step back and really recognize the enormity of what we've been doing and all of what, what we've sort of done together to get to where we are so that they can, they will continue to learn and to apply what's going on.
Terrific, thank you.
I, I just want to commend and thank you and the entire team and faculty at Saks. Um, I think, you know, we've all done a phenomenal job. I think it's so gratifying to see how much of the social, emotional curriculum that's been put into place over the last couple of years is really, um, providing a great level of support from what I can tell. And I'm a huge fan of your newsletters. I think, um, it's so important at this, in this times where we can't access a school and it's just hard to imagine what the days look like. And I think like you did tonight, just all the photographs and the pictures and the storytelling, it brings to life what's actually happening in our schools. And it's, it's really reassuring and just amazing truly to see the amount of progress and change that has taken place over this year and, and how our students are continuing to learn and, you know, just the resilience and everything that they, you know, show every day is, is really incredible. So thank you.
Thanks, Katrina. I appreciate that. And I, I just want to add on to it, you know, I, I want to share that, um, not only do I want to thank the administrative team that I work with, um, our entire staff and faculty. You know, when we do meet, we have brief staff meetings each week and, um, you know, that's always that we, we kind of call the kudos for colleagues. And we do celebrate each other as well, uh, because it's important for us to continue to pick each other up and, and make sure that we understand that we're all part of this team. And we used a quote last week that, you know, really captured the essence of what we're going through, that, you know, we, we're open and honest. This is not easy, you know, this is a challenge for everybody, but we're, we're in it together. And, um, you know, I always make sure that, that, that sincere thanks and gratitude goes out to our staff and that it's heartfelt. And even though I, I let them know, I say, listen, I know I say this every week, guys, but, you know, this is something that you need to hear because it's important because what you're doing and the service you're providing for our kids is, you know, it really is, uh, it's, it's impressive and, you know, and, and I'm so proud that we're able to do that for our kids here and, and also for the families in the community.
Thank you.
As you can tell, it wasn't easy for Mr. Gusich to get this done in five minutes. So thank you, Dave.
Sorry, I went a little over.
A lot to talk about, but now you do good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else on the, on the COVID front, Dr. Lutz?
A million and one things.
Yeah.
I'm glad to answer any questions, otherwise I think maybe we should transition into budget.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, so our, um, big action item tonight is to, uh, approve or review the second read and approve the budget. Uh, before we move into that though, I, I know, um, thank you all for submitting your questions. And I think I want to just, I think we should take a moment and just review, um, answer any additional questions and review some of the, the questions that have come in. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lutz and Dr. Keating, um, to kick us off.
Okay, I am, um, glad to, to start a little bit. And I think that, uh, Brendan, as a member of the resource committee, also may have an exhibit to walk through as well. There were a couple of questions that came in that we, we sent back. The, let's see, so we, we do want to, um, remind everyone about the budget itself. Oh, Tracy just reminded me not to forget about her. See that? Sorry, Trace. Hold on, there you go. It's best to talk about budget with our budget director in the room.
While you move over, I just, the, the, um,
Thank you.
spreadsheet that Brendan put together, I think, just helps to draft a lot of, you know, some of the questions that came in. So I, you know, we can go get to that.
Do you want me to, do you want me to? Do you want me to, do you want me to walk through that as a starting point and then we can kind of circle back?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Okay. So I think, I think you all got it by email, but, um, Dr. Letty, you think you could put it on the screen? Does that work? Great. Uh, so I just put this one page together to try to, you know, capture what is, um, you know, complex year to year comparison. You know, with all the puts and takes around COVID and, um, internal services fund. I thought kind of trying to get it onto one page would be a, um, a good thing to do. So what this does, uh, as it looks at, uh, first line here is, uh, the current year, 2020, 2021. Adopted budget. So the town council board of finance approved budget. And this puts to the side whether we've spent money or not, um, within that budget, because obviously COVID is materially impacting this year. Sorry, excuse me. Sorry about that. And, uh, and what this does, it says, because of the fact that 2021's budget, this year's budget, when we approved it last year, when town council and board of finance approved it and was adopted last year, didn't include, um, COVID related expenses. So this was, you know, UK and public schools kind of run rate, you know, regular operations. So that's the starting point. And then to bridge, there are a few major items. So first is the $909,000 of COVID expenses that are in the 2122 budget. Which is on page 19 in the budget, uh, the budget book. The next, uh, is $1.4 million of an increase in the internal services fund contribution, which I'll walk through at the bottom. Which requires, uh, kind of its own explanation, but I'll, I'll walk through that. The start and end time change, which is 463,000. And then really a plug number is other, uh, which is the 1.74 million dollars to get to the total gross 2122 budget. That's been proposed, which is the 95.4. So those are kind of the, the major buckets. Before I go on, any questions on that? Okay. So to explain the other changes, putting aside COVID, the internal services funds and the start and end time changes, which I think are all, you know, explained separately. And, and I'll go through number three. I'll go through the internal services fund. Putting those aside, the other changes are 1.7 million dollars. 1.7 million dollars represents, um, as a percentage of the prior year, 1.92%. And then excluding internal services fund, it's 2.15%. So that takes out COVID, takes out internal services fund. And it takes out the start and end time changes. That's kind of our baseline budget. So to explain the other changes, uh, you go to row nine. And that row nine is that just the contractual salary plus step increases, um, including kind of a placeholder for negotiations. Which is $2 million. So if you look at that $2 million compared to the 1.742 of the other changes, the 2%, that means that things other than contractual salary increases, um, you know, step grid progression are saving us $265,000. So everything other than, you know, salary is saving us 265 grand. Which, you know, by the way, that's pretty consistent with what we've seen over the last, as far as I can remember, three to four years. You know, we've seen essentially savings in the budget from things like energy and, um, you know, some in-sourcing, maintenance, those kinds of things to offset salary increases. Any questions? Okay, um, so this is probably the most difficult to understand, the number three here, which is explaining the increase in the contribution to the internal services fund. So and please stop me if this gets a little dense, but, um, the line number 12 is last year's, or I should say this current year, 2021. Internal services fund contribution from the budget. So 9.75 million dollars. Because of experience leading up to the beginning of this school year. So through June 30th of last year of 2020. The fund actually started the year better than what we expected to the tune of 2.2 million dollars. So the reason that's a negative number is because since it did better, that would then make our contribution for next year lower. So it reduces the contribution number. Then you look at, um, this current year's projected benefits. And, um, and negative results as compared to the original budget. So as a result of COVID, um, we're not getting a $200,000 contribution from food services fund. And then there are a few other, um, changes on the revenue side. So that means we have to contribute more to the tune of $240,000, $41,000. But we're also seeing lower net expenditures, which is slightly better claims experience. So that's, that reduces our net contribution to the tune of $550,000. So that's everything up until the beginning of the next fiscal year, up until June 30th, 2020, sorry, 2021. And then we look at actuarially speaking, you know, and this comes from Joe Spurgeon's work. What do we need to do to meet our policy? So row 16 is just based on experience. Excuse me, Joe would say, um, we'd need to be up 1.22%. So I've applied that number to the, the projected claims for this year, which is 160 grand. You know, as he talked about last week, uh, in our resources committee meeting, uh, the COVID adjustment, which is, you know, a, an expectation that we're going to have, um, you know, essentially deferred procedures and other, um, you know, uses of healthcare services moved into next year. That's 1.2 million dollars. That's 9.3%, which is a little over a million dollars. The actuarial cost trend, this is something that we see every year. It's just, um, healthcare cost inflation. And what he's used is 8.99% annualized, which because of the fact he's forecasting out for so many months, aggregates to 15.9%. So that's another almost $2 million. The budgeted stop loss insurance increase is $265,000. And then everything else to get to, um, the, the aggregate budgeted internal services fund contribution is $368,000. So the, the increase of the internal services fund, um, year over year is really completely explained by, if you, if you look at rows 17 and 18, uh, which are assumptions around, you know, COVID pushing out costs into next year. Uh, and then the actuarial healthcare cost trend, uh, which we see every year. That's something in Joe's numbers every year. And the hope is that, the hope slash, you know, expectation is that as we roll things forward, right? That row 18 comes down, um, and our hope also is that, um, you know, row 17 will mean that, uh, will, will be lower or, you know, potentially zero. But those are the, those are really the reason that we're seeing, um, the internal services funds be higher than, uh, than, you know, where we were last year. So if we go back to the top, well, why don't I, why don't I pause there? Are there questions on the internal services fund piece of this?
Penny. So I, what, I guess one of the things I just wanted to have somebody speak to, this is incredibly helpful analysis. And I appreciate how you've taken this entire budget and sort of simplified it for us. So that, you know, the internal services fund over the years is very much of a seesaw number, uh, because we're a self-insured district. But if, overall, being a self-insured district has saved us millions of dollars. And so like, for example, last year, because of COVID, claims at the end of the year plummeted. And so we actually had that extra, um, balance. I think, you know, that most of it is the, the 2.2 million on line 13 that, that Brendan has there. And, and that went back to the benefit of the district and the town. It was money that we didn't spend. So I just think we should keep these numbers in perspective and know that over time, even, you know, if our projections are too high, the money comes back to the district. Uh, and that this is a difficult thing for us to estimate every year, but it is a excellent plan. If we had been a district that just paid for health insurance last year, we would, we would have had a premium. It would have been set for the entire year and we would have just kept paying it and we would have had, we would not have recognized, um, the benefit and reduced, uh, claims. So I don't know if we've ever tallied up how much we've saved by being self-insured, uh, but I wanted to point that out.
I think we actually tally, I think Joe actually looked at that last year and the number I remember was, I think, 10 million or thereabouts over the past four or five years, a big number.
Right. So I, so even though this is a, is an up, I, I don't think we should worry about it in this district. I think that this is a, a, a very, a great benefit to New Canaan and the taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, we, we mentioned, we talked about that briefly with Joe, Penny. It's a great point that, uh, if we were not, if we were fully insured, the money we're talking about would have all been a profit to the insurance company.
Exactly.
So and all the design changes we've done through the years with our negotiations and others, other work that's been done to improve the efficiency of this plan has really paid off. I have those slides from last year, they are on that deck. If you'd be interested to, to see them again, I'd be glad to pull out those couple of slides and, and send them around.
Terrific.
So Brian, if you just go back to the top, if that works, great. So I just, you know, I just wanted to highlight the, uh, if you sort of look at these buckets down through row 11. You know, you can kind of see the, the major drivers, their COVID, um, their internal services fund, their start and end times. And their, you know, salaries, contractual salary increases, everything else is, is actually a reduction. So the internal services fund I view, my, my personal view is that's, you know, kind of as Penny said, we, we have to do what makes sense from an actuarial standpoint. Um, and adjust that and be, um, you know, upfront with board of finance and town council, um, that we're gonna, you know, we're going to budget for what we need. So if that number improves, uh, over the course of the, the spring, then we'll bring it down. But that, that kind of is what it is. Um, I think what you can see from the numbers that we put together and what Joe outlined is that our, you know, our experience is actually, um, consistent, largely consistent with expectations. And then, you know, COVID and start time changes, um, you know, are kind of self-explanatory. But the last thing I note is, uh, you know, if you were to look at this instead, which, um, which the administration has and is detailed in the, uh, the budget presentation on a kind of projected or cash basis for 2021. It kind of, it very significantly skews the numbers, um, just because of the very significant COVID impact, um, in, uh, in the current year. So it's hard to, to compare things on that basis. You know, when you're looking year to year from a COVID year to a, you know, at least partially non-COVID year.
Actually, Brendan, let me, this is Carl, let me, um, jump in and expand on that point because it's, it's an important one. It's one I wrestled with a lot of the last couple of weeks. And, you know, typically the approach that, um, Dr. Keating takes is to use the, you know, currently projected numbers for the current fiscal year, just because they're the most fresh and have the most, um, you know, up to date figures, um, to put into a, into a base. That's, that's always the right thing to do in a typical year. Unfortunately, this year obviously has not been typical. And so then when you go to the projected numbers, then, and you necessarily have to get into the exercise of what is the spending that is anomalous, you know, COVID specific? And subtract that out because it would not be spending that you, you need to have in a, in a typical year. And then what is money that we budgeted to spend, but then didn't have to spend, uh, um, both, both in fiscal 20 and then again in, in 21 that we should, um, that we should add back to the base because that, that's, um, money would, would typically need to be expended in, in a normal year. And so you really get into all those puts and takes and it just really complicates and muddies the, um, the analysis. And so I think it's much better to, to do actually what you do here. Which is to just start with the adopted budget from last year, because that was, you know, we didn't take any COVID in, into account. Obviously we're aware of it towards the tail end of the budget process, but that did not make it sway into the numbers, you know, at all. So it's a much cleaner exercise, I think, to start this way. I did do, go through the analysis of trying to figure out all the puts and takes and, uh, add backs and subtracts. And interestingly enough, but not surprising, the number that you get on that, um, on that projected number, uh, on a pro forma basis, so as excluding COVID, gets very close to that 90.9 million dollar base. And it's not, it's not too surprising. It's, it's off by, you know, a, a difference of a couple hundred thousand. So I just think it's, it's, it's easier and in many ways, um, it, it gets us away from having to make the judgment calls as to, you know, what's a, what's a pure COVID spend or, or, um, or savings.
Yeah, just the other thing to point out on, on that topic is, um, you know, when you look at the COVID expenses in the 2122 budget. You know, it's a little bit less than the expected, you know, projected savings, um, in this year's budget. I E. That we're likely to spend a million dollars less than this top line here of 90.88 million dollars. Which you can kind of think of as, um, you know, potentially rolling over to fund, uh, fund those COVID expenses in next year. Next year's budget.
Yeah, that, that is a good point. So I, and I looked at that as well. And when you, you look at the unexpendited amounts, which totaled about 3.1 million dollars, um, from last fiscal year and what we anticipate for this fiscal year. Um, and then you look at unusual expenses that were incurred in the budget last year, this year, anticipated for next year, that 909, and plus some of the, the stuff that happened outside of the operating budget from the, um, from the sustaining account. They, it washes, um, you know, the COVID impact is essentially washes. So it's what we didn't spend on certain things, we ended up spending on, on other things, kind of over the three-year COVID impact period, uh, based on kind of what we see today.
Julie.
Yeah, I think Brendan, thank you for doing this. I think what it points out, and basically I think Brendan and Carly, you were saying the same thing is, is it crystallizes the fact that, that changes in our budget. Most of them are things over which we have no control. You know, the salaries and benefits are baked in, um, internal services fund, COVID, like things that we are not, um, able to decrease. And so, um, even though our budgets go up year to year, you know, the majority of that is, is not anything that we can change. And, and so we are as careful as we possibly can be with those, those things that, um, you know, are making the budget go up. So thank you for doing this.
Sherry.
Yeah, I also just wanted to chime in. I agree, Brendan. This is really helpful for me personally. And I think it just makes so much sense to really focus in. on the component parts and to really look at COVID, um, the ISF, um, the start time and then the other. And really then when you look at the other change, which is what you're getting down to and to really focus in that, that is all contractually based. And then I think there's a lot, you know, looking at the reductions that we're not even really taking credit for some of the efficiencies that have been gained there. So I think that's, that's a good thing. My question actually is on the COVID expense line. Just, I think, you know, this is, I don't know if this is best case or if, if we continue, if this number continues to evolve as we continue to hear more about, you know, this new variant and, you know, if there's going to be a worst case that of this pandemic going into 22 and, and even kind of the long term, you know, thinking about hygiene and custodial staff going forward, you know, I, I think going forward, we're always going to think about it differently, um, based on the pandemic's experience. So I guess I just, my question is more to the administration of, you know, on the COVID expense line, if, you know, we're really comfortable that that's you know, a full in number for what we'll need.
I'll, I'll, thank you, Sherry. I'll, I'll start and certainly anyone is welcome to, to jump in, Joanna or otherwise. But the, you know, you're right, it's, we're making, whenever you build a budget, you're, uh, you're doing your best to make itemized estimates for all of these things. And so, you know, what we're looking at really is the what it's called, what it costs now, what the mitigation strategies we think will have to have in place and the penetration of the vaccine and the anticipation that the vaccine is going to work with the variant. So we had some good news about that just recently today where, you know, Moderna is looking at adapting their vaccine to make sure that it is flexible enough to be responsive to, with the variants. So, um, you know, we, we putting in uh, items in the budget that we think that we will need, based on what we know today. With an understanding that if we do wind up needing more, that the Board of Finance has been good partners with us and they've recognized the importance of the, the investments here and that, you know, it's with their, with their help and partnership, really right from the beginning, they got us, helped us to get to where we are today. So, uh, I would anticipate that they continue to be good partners if it turns out to be more dire than we're predicting and that, uh, you know, the expenditure needs to be more. On the other side of that, I think that, you know, we have to plan for it to exist for, we're still going to be responding to it in different ways. So we work to figure out what's the amount that we need to be confident that we'd be able to open our doors on day one. Uh, with it still the environment, but hopefully to a different degree. Right? So as the vaccines continue to penetrate and the more and more people in the community and throughout the state and beyond, even really across the world are able to get it. It should make a difference. So we're trying to strike that balance as an itemized estimate, but we have had good cooperation and partnership with the Board of Finance and other town boards. So that helps.
So one thing to let the board know is this budget does include, um, you know, half a year support through this, the first semester for the current um, uh, interventions that were, we have in place. So our custodial staff through to the end of January, um, the building subs through the end of January, uh, through the first semester and all the related expenses. So if there is not herd vaccination on, in place by winter of next year, we'll know ahead of time and be able to plan forward with the boards in town. But it is a good point. I mean, we do have a new standard of cleaning and we have to determine whether or not we can sustain that after this is behind us.
Penny. You're on mute, Penny. Sorry, I hadn't heard anything about vaccinating uh, children yet. And so, you know, most of our uh, school population, you know, will not be vaccinated. That I've heard of, you know, at the start of the school year, or I'm not sure where that's going. How does that impact the need for um, the mitigation, the COVID expenses into the next school year? And what are that, what are the, um, you know, uh, specialists saying about that?
So the, there are some studies that are being conducted now for folks 16 and over. I don't believe there's much going on below that. The, so it is something that we have to continue to take into account as far as the social distancing goes and cohorting goes. You know, we fully expect as we get into next year, that we'll still periodically need to quarantine when there are positive cases, things like that. The, we have some positive news, I believe. I saw an article today out of Israel where they've had significant vaccinations and the, uh, of the Pfizer, I believe, and they're finding it to be even more efficacious than what they had expected. So I think that's a good sign, you know, for us and for our teaching staff coming back in. But we still, we anticipate the social distancing, the mitigation strategies, even the mask wearing will probably still be uh, all be needed when we start up next year and as, as we continue to get to a place where, uh, where we figure out what comes next.
Great. Other questions or points on operating?
And of course.
Only other thing I, I'd add is I am, sorry, did not raise my hand. The only other thing I'd add is I, I know in past years we've looked at um, how our um, per people expenditures compared to our Derg. And um, you know, just given where our budget is this year, so that's the, you know, approved budget relative to other towns where we're now, you know, firmly in the um, the lower portion of our Derg. So we're, we're below most of the other um, districts from a per people expenditure standpoint. So we continue to do, um, you know, really well by that measure.
Right. Dr. Keating or Dr. Is there anything else you wanted to add? Or do we want to talk about capital?
We can, if you're comfortable, we can transition to capital, but we'll, we can keep, we can come back to operating if questions go up along the way, but I know that Dan Clark is here to uh, join us for discussion about capital and to be able to answer any questions as well. So why don't I um, find Dan over here and here he is. I'll promote him over. I'm sorry, I'm going to move my dog who's eating his toy right here. This work from home stuff is tough. All right.
We need a board of ed mascot.
Yeah. There we go. Welcome, Dan.
Welcome. Thank you.
Of course, my dog followed me right back in the room with the same toy. So I'm going to have to figure out a new strategy on that one too. Why don't we shift over to capital? If um, I know there was uh, just some interesting learning, just a little bit more about the planning with uh, CHP and solar. Do we want to talk about that or anything else in particular? Are there any questions from the board? That anything in specifically you'd like us to go into a little more detail about? I'll be glad to, I'll share the document itself. And jump to capital.
If you go down the tab, um, it's probably around 100, page 100, somewhere in that area.
103, 104.
Yeah, there we go. Uh, we could briefly go through each item here. It's a page and a half and then um, take a pause after each section for questions. And just highlight the, the big ticket items or the main um, goals that we have. So within this budget, we are proposing to reroute the high school. And that is currently being developed. The specification is being developed right now and will be out on the street in um, February, and we do plan to have the bids back vetted and prepared to uh, provide the town council with a proposal with a number. It's going out in uh, with two types of a, uh, application. It's either going to be done all at once, which means that there will be uh, roof, rerufen taking place during the school year. Or the second option is going to be in a two-phase project over two summers. So we'll, we'll get the bids in, we'll analyze the options that we have, look at the pricing and make a proposal to the town. Uh, right now we're looking at 3.5 million for each of two years. So the, the budget that's going before the town is assuming two phases. This would be the first phase. Although in a conversation that Dan and I had with our designer last week, he told us that the pricing may come down and it could come down significantly depending on how we actually stage each section of the roof. And there's many sections in the roof. So uh, this will be an interesting uh, process that we go through. And hopefully it will save us the same uh, percentage of dollars that were saved on both South and East by the bidding strategies that we employed for both of those projects. And we came in between 20 and 25% below um, cost estimates based on how we staged it. So if you go up to the top, Ryan, that's the $100,000 that is there is really to um, continue the engineering services into next year in addition to the roofing. So that supports the roofing project. Uh, general engineering is for, we have a boiler project going on at South and a few other projects that will require engineering services. And then you're going to see in here that we do have uh, some CHP projects going on. So this is a typical engineering budget that we have. Especially with the roof replacements um, in there at 100,000. If you go to East and the other schools, we are going to continue with our painting program that's been in place for several years now. It's been highly effective in terms of really tripping away at the areas that need to be freshened up within the schools. At East, we have a part, uh, the parking lot renovation project, which was deferred last year uh, because of all the projects that were going on at that site, namely the roofing and the other exterior work to the facade. So we are at a place right now where we feel that that, um, the East parking lot is something that we do want to tackle. Tiger handles those projects for us. He's been very helpful. He goes out to bid with his own projects for the streets and we kind of piggyback on them. So we're working, Dan is working with him in terms of resolving or getting that project uh, priced out. The internal PA systems, the public address systems within the schools uh, were reviewed this past year and these are prices that we did receive from our current vendor. And so West has been completed this current year and East and South need to be uh, completed next year. So you'll see fundings for that. Going over to South, the playground stair repair, this is for the staircase that goes from the upper level down to the playground in the lower level. And that's going to be um, tied in for a joint bid with the rear sidewalk courtyard um, repaving project that has been requested by the school. The vitumidis uh, that surrounds the school from the side around the back, um, that's an asphalt uh, structure is really decaying and breaking apart and it's really a safety issue that needs to be addressed. The South School Boiler Replacement Project has been in the books for a few years now. It's been on our five-year capital plan. It was delayed last year, deferred, I believe, and this year, um, it is at the end of its useful life. And the pricing in here is based on what we received for one boiler over at Saks. It's a similar type of plant rollout with a two boiler replacement. Saks happens to be three, but uh, we use that pricing for the budget. And again, you can see the uh, PA upgrades there. When you get down to West, uh, the painting is in that project is in that um, school as well. Dan talked to Tiger today and Tiger is feeling that this project uh, to repave the parking lot at 300,000, which has been deferred for several years because of the anticipation of natural gas is probably going to be deferred another year. So we talked about that today and we're going to be requesting that the town do a significant uh, patch job to that parking lot. It's really in desperate need to be brought up to some, to a standard where it's not risky for people. Moving down.
Dr. Keating, can I just ask a question at West? Is um, is the tank there now a propane tank? Or is it an above ground oil tank? I just can't remember where we ended up with uh, with that system.
We had to abandon the existing tank last summer, uh, because we could not get an, an extra year deferral from the EPA. So uh, what we did was we worked with um, Country Day School, who was uh, who had a, an above ground oil tank that was in place while they were doing their renovations. And we purchased it from them for 5,000 and had it set up for the year. So it is above ground right now.
That seems like a good deal.
It was a good deal, to be honest with you. You didn't kind of jump through hoops to make it happen, to be honest with you. So Kadoos Tim because it was like a last minute, how do we make it happen kind of a thing? And in the midst of everything else you're going through for COVID. So um, I just have to give him props for that, but um, so we can make it in another few years. You have no problem there. So but the parking lot is an issue for us, believe it or not. And uh, we'll have to go from there. But if we do put propane in, it's going to save us, you know, maybe 10, 15,000 dollars. The total uh, bill right now that, for oil, based on our current pricing is 40,000 a year to heat that building. So it's a very significant expense and um, so we can delay, you know, a decision on that without a problem.
Would the, just to follow up on that, would the propane tank also go above ground or would it go underground?
No, the plan right now is to bury it out in the front loop, you know, beyond in the grass area. And pipe it up. And that'll last, I think, if you recall the uh, presentation by Mitchell, um, a year or so ago, they said they last like 80 years. They just burn so clean. So everything's, it's much different than an oil tank.
Right.
So just as a reminder, at Saks, we had money in the budget for a CHP that was under our budget originally. Then it went over to the town's uh, side of the budget. And, and basically what we had presented last year was a CHP unit. Um, and one um, condensing boiler to replace a three boiler plant. What happened was, once we got into this study with OLA, who was the engineers on the project, they informed us that we really needed, in order to carry the proper load for the building, all three of the boilers within the building needed to be replaced with condensing boilers and the savings would be significantly, be significant. Furthermore, we learned that there's a, a significant refund or incentive from the utility company up to 70% of the cost. It's formula based, but for the replacement of the boiler with a high condensing boiler. And we, we made the decision that that was the right way to go and that the COGEN or the CHP was a complement to the boiler plant. And so we broke it down into two phases. The, the first phase, which is in the current year's budget is to put in a CHP and one condensing boiler. We went out to bid for the boilers, including all three boilers, but a two-phase project. And so the first phase with the one boiler is currently um, in progress. The second phase, which would be in next year's budget, is this bid number right here, the 34734. And so that will get, complete the boiler plant at Saks, which is something that we desperately need to do. The second phase of the CHP um, would be to add on to the CHP that's currently being bid out right now. So that's been the plan all along is to have the CHP plant expanded at Saks for next year. Now the town has an advisory committee to the selectmen. And at its last meeting, um, the town's consultant proposed that we stay with the phase one at Saks for the CHP and um, transition that funding or the, the concept of expanding CHP to New Canaan High School. So that's something that's going to need to be studied over the next few months to determine where the best bang, or so to speak, or the, the best uh, return is for that $400,000 investment. And we'll have to dig deeper into that. But he did say that through that meeting as well, that um, he wasn't suggesting, he was transitioning from putting solar on top of the high school uh, more towards the CHP. And that's something that we heard for the first time and we need to really study that much deeper before we can um, kind of settle in on the, the right pathway forward. Clearly solar is the least um, costly and environmentally safe in terms of generating energy. So there's more to come on that. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion as we go present this to the selectmen tomorrow morning, but I wanted the board to be aware of that in case they heard some conversation in town. So just moving down to the high school, we did have the very successful uh, repaving. we did have the very successful repaving project last year. It was the biggest part of the, the paving project at seven hundred and, I think, fifty thousand, seven seventy-five. And this would just be the second phase of that project. Again, we just talked about the roof and the painting.
Joanne, before we move on, I think Deanna had a question.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I just, I, I wasn't sure if I understood correctly. So you're going to be reevaluating with your, the CHP consultant or vendor or whatever as to whether or not we proceed at the high school first? Or I guess the question I have is the three point five on the roof because I know we talked about, you know, needing some special things on other roofs to accommodate so, solar. And I don't know this number, you know, if, if it would be modified if we weren't going to be putting solar on top of the roof. So if you could just address that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, well, what happens when we call it a roof solar ready is we have engaged a structural engineer and they study the structure and the materials that are in place on the roof. So there's a variety of different types of roof, roofs. Dan knows far more about this than I do, so I would defer to him to speak to it. But there's roofs that are more suitable for solar panels with the weight than other roofs. And right now it appears that the southern end, which is over the gyms, will have a lot of real, uh, real estate after we do some modifications to some of the skylights and so forth. And it has southern exposure to, to really generate a significant amount of solar. There is a long run back to the utility room, the mechanical room. But it does appear to be an ideal piece of real estate for solar. So we haven't abandoned the idea of putting solar up there. Like I said, we, it was just thrown out in a very short period of time at a meeting and without any, without consulting with us. So we really want to dig into that. And as you know, when it comes to solar, there's zero capital outline. It's a PPA. We don't have to put four, four hundred thousand, eight hundred, a million dollars. We basically pay a bill, an electrical bill to, to the developer.
So I, I guess that, and I'm, you know, I, I, I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination. I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, sort of in the specking for the roof, that there aren't additional expenses associated with solar that we may abandon down the road. I guess that's the, because we don't need, because of this other option with the CHP or whatever. And so we put too much money in, you know, an upscaled roof that we don't need because we're doing, we've decided on an alternate solution.
Yeah, so the, what the structural engineer does is they take a look at the materials that are on the decking. And they say you can, it can hold X amount of weight, or it can't. We're not going to tear off the roof to make it more stable, so to speak, for solar. The things that we do do to make it solar ready is there's padding. There's different clippings and different things like that that are, you know, they cost thirty or forty thousand. But you do them once the solar display or array is laid out. And then they, you know, that dictates what you do in terms of making a roof solar ready. Am I saying that correctly, Dan?
Yes. So a lot of that work is, needs to be done as just part of the normal roof replacement. Replace the insulation and you replace any components to the roof structure itself that you find throughout the course of the project. And that's why we, we do it early in the process. And at the end of the process, when we're ready to design the roof, you know, parameters are, are there. And then we know what the, what's called the excess capacity, also taking in mind snowlobe and snow drifting, which is required to be able to meet code. So at the end, we know then what existing capacity is left over. And that's determined if that is enough to support solar array system.
Thank you.
All right. Can I just ask one question? So if we were to do a Cogen plant at the high school, that would coincide with, or this is a question, would, would that coincide with boiler replacement there as well?
The, the high school boilers are not scheduled to be replaced. I believe they were replaced in the renovation.
So does that make, does that make the economics of, of a Cogen plant less attractive?
Not necessarily.
Or is, no, okay.
No, it, it really is the, the load that you can push off to it.
Got it.
Electric, electric load.
And is, is that the advantage to having it at Saks because the boilers are already being replaced?
Well, there's two, two pluses in term, at Saks. One is that we are having the boilers replaced, so we're going to have highly efficient boilers over there. So the energy that's being produced for heating is reduced. You know, the demand, the need is reduced. However, it does offset demand. And the two issues that we have, the two schools that we have issues with peak demand and ratchet charges, where like more than half of our bill is peak, is at the high school in Saks. So we're trying to use the Cogens to mitigate both goals that we have. Reduce heating, be more efficient with heating, but also bring those peak demand times down a bit by utilizing energy, electricity from the CHP. So I think the idea of putting a CHP is, you know, probably has a lot of merit, but I do think it needs to be studied. And I will also just add is the engineers that have worked on Saks, OLA, do believe that the school, there is a, a significant or a good payback at Saks for expanding the CHP to a Phase Two. That's been their advice, the engineers who know that building.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving down, as we have in prior years, we're going to put in for three sped vehicle replacements. This will be the last replacement for the wheelchair van. And then we should be set with wheelchair vans for a while. And then the, the last piece here is the technology. We have consistently budgeted for six hundred thousand in spend. And, um, and that's what you'll see this year. You'll see the, the spend plan in the appendix. I think it's Appendix A.
Just on, on the vehicles, is this what we budgeted historically, the fifty thousand dollars? I just can't remember.
Yeah, for three, yeah, we usually, we've been doing three. It's been the, the replacement cycle. It's a large fleet. I believe there's twenty-two or twenty-four vehicles.
Great, thanks.
And there's just an explanation of everything as you go through it. And then you'll see also in the capital section, a five-year plan, which we do every year. And so you'll see, we are in the, the cycle of boiler replacements with the exception of the high school in the five-year. So you'll see East and West come up too in future years.
Joanne, sorry, I left my raised hand up, so I wasn't sure if Katrina.
I'm sorry.
Because I forgot to lower it. With, I noticed with the new internal public address system upgrades, you know, is, did something happen or is there, I mean, you know, whenever there's a new signi, you know, fairly significant expense, you know, I'm, I'm always interested to understand what prompted it because we do such a great job of planning out for five years.
I think it's, you know, and Dan, please add to this, but over the last several years, we have just spent, we've spent probably almost as much as we're asking for in capital and repairs. They're so outdated and, you know, they're just so tired that they need to be updated. And it's for us, it's a safety, you know, the PA system is our communication tool, safety. But Dan, you know, please add to that.
Yeah, no, that's basically it. The components were aging out in the field. After many, many years of broadcasting and components loosen up, vibration and so forth. Some of the amplifiers are very old. So we thought it's time now to just go ahead and do it, as Joanne said, especially for safety sake.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Penny.
If we're going to get a seventy percent reimbursement on the boiler, I, I, maybe you could talk a little bit about the timing of getting that. I, I don't know how that incentive is working, is if that one, if that's an incentive that is potentially going to go away. Should we consider bringing forward some of the other boiler replacements?
I mean, it's a good question, Penny. There's nothing is guaranteed as these incentives do change and, you know, take on new life and are bundled over time. So, but it is, I mean, maybe, Dan, we've currently applied for the Saks, I believe. Is that correct?
We're in the process of completing the application.
Okay. Yeah, and I think it's a direct incentive that comes back after, you know, the way Eversource works with their incentive program is once you've completed and commissioned the project, they, they literally write you a check for whatever they agreed to give you. And so that would go right to the town. And they would receive that, as they have on the other projects.
Is it, I have a question on the West School parking lot. So it's, oh, where does the decision on natural gas factor into that parking lot? Because I know that has something to do with the oil tank replacement and, you know, one thing leads to the other.
Yeah, I mean, we've been working with Tiger, we work with Tiger on all of the repaving projects. And Dan, I mean, maybe you can share what he communicated to you very recently.
Sure, I spoke with Tiger today. He's going to come up and take a look at it tomorrow for the same reason we spoke of. We're not going to do a full replacement at this time. We should just look at the patching that's needed to make this, make the walkway safe as people get out of their cars. There's been, there's been a lot of work on that driveway when the new water line was ran through there. There's a big patch for that, so. So we want to make sure that it's safe as long as we need it to be through the duration while we decide what we're going to do with natural gas or propane or whatever we're going to do. So we're going to be planning that right away. And make sure that it's addressed, at least temporarily, if not permanently, possibly next year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on capital? Any other questions or comments on the budget? Let's see. Penny and Deanna, your hands are up, but I don't know if that's from before. Maybe it is.
Mine's new, but Penny can go first if she has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Deanna.
So I think, uh, two things. One, um, Joanne, I, I just, this is kind of a nit on the, um, on the late start time money. Because as I went through and looked at the costs through, you know, sort of the, the summary of the adds and subtracts to the budget that were highlighted, I saw the forty-six, three eighteen and the thirty-nine hundred for the staffing. And then the three seventy-eight, six sixty-eight for the busing, which totaled four fifty-five, eight eighty-six. I'm guessing, and that, but the, the number that we show in sort of the summary and in your summary, Brendan's summary page and the summary page that's in the budget is four sixty-three, three three seven. Is that, I mean, that's more than just payroll taxes because that's, you know, our conversation this afternoon. You know, I, I figured like based on last year, payroll taxes were about five, five percent of this, the, the costs. I don't know exactly what it is, but it was just, you know, estimating. So can you just explain that variance? What, what's in that variance that's, you know, between what's in the adds and subtract to the budget and the number that's in the, in the summary?
Well, it should be exactly the same number. So let me take a look at that tomorrow and just confirm that something wasn't changed and didn't get moved over to the pluses and minuses of why the budget changed.
Okay, okay. And then, um, I guess, thank you. I appreciate that. And then I guess I just need to first address sort of the public comment that was made earlier so that those who asked a specific question understand the answer to that question. And they are correct. There's no, there's been no change to the start times that were presented from last year. So the, the cost, the overall cost would be the same as last year. Plus, Joanne, would it be like a three point two five percent adder because of bus contract? You know.
Yes.
Additions. That's how I figured it out earlier. So just so the public understands what that is. So, um, and I, I guess I needed to sort of first thank the administration for being so responsive to the board's goal this year of implementing, again, putting it in this year, implementing start times as part of the goals in our discussion. And in the conversations that I've been involved with, there's been a real commitment by the board to seeing start times being changed. That said, I have fairly strong reservations about a mid-year change for this coming budget year. There's a lot of uncertainty as to what next year is going to look like, where COVID is going to be, what our mitigation strategies are going to be, what the expenses associated with those mitigation strategies are going to be. And, um, you know, so I think we've got a lot of uncertainty going into next year. And the idea of implementing a major initiative in the second semester of the school year, I think is, um, you know, I, I worry, you know, there was a comment, you know, our administration can walk and chew gum. I think it minimizes the effort that is going to be needed to implement this change. And it's not just in the busing itself, it's going to be working with parents. There's strong opposition in this community and there's going to be a lot of focus groups and talking. And I think, I think we need to bring people around and be responsive to, to a lot of the concerns that have been expressed over the last year and a half. Um, and, and getting people on board, particularly with our youngest learners. Because, you know, it, it is a fair assumption, it is a fair comment that we've spent the least amount of time focusing on that part of our community. And I think they deserve our attention. I also think that, you know, going into next year, we're going to have a lot of working parents who are really uncertain about their childcare needs going into next year. And the idea of, you know, they, they don't, right now, most people don't even know what their work situation is going to look like. Are they going to be remote? Are they going to be at home? And then to have them have to change or look into childcare adjustments in possibly February, it's very difficult. I mean, I had conversations this weekend with pre-K program directors who have already told me their, their slots are full. It was very hard this year adjusting their staffing based on COVID mitigation. And, you know, I think we, we really just need to be sensitive to all the moving parts in this community and what our adjustment can do to an entire ecosystem. And so, um, you know, I think that it's smarter and I think we'll have a better implementation if we really look to having a September rollout after we've had an opportunity to really kind of revisit with our elementary parents and probably our fifth, sixth parents, because they're going to have a major adjustment as well. So I think we need to spend some time on that. And, um, and then finally, you know, for our teachers, you know, changing childcare in February for teaching staff, you know, you're going to have your elementary teachers. You know, a nine oh five start to a, you know, a seven forty-five start is a significant change. That puts on big stressors on families, on, you know, who's going to take care of their children so that they can get to work. And I think that is a more natural change over the summer. You know, that's when most registrations occur. That's if you're in a, in a group childcare situation. So I, I just think that we are being, um, we are putting our community in a really tough spot by looking at them, that, looking at a mid-year implementation. And then finally, I really want our efforts of our administration, once we start to see the light out of these COVID, um, you know, mitigation strategies, to be focused on what, what are the things we need to really address with our students that they may have lost over the last year and a half in being in this, you know, in being in this, you know, different learnings that, you know, we may be great, but most, most people that I've spoken with have said, you know, there are going to be learning gaps that need to be addressed and there's going to be focus needing to be made on attending to those learning and, you know, educational gaps and and I don't want our administration's time and effort to be distracted from that, you know, at the most critical time. So I at, you know, I I support the effort, but I don't support the mid-year implementation. And so would, you know, I would be looking to remove from this budget, whatever the actual number is, the four sixty three or the four fifty five for start time changes.
Thank you, Deanna. Carl?
So actually, just switching topic back to the the healthcare and the and the ISF. Brendan did a really good job of walking through that. There is some, you know, unknowns, COVID unknowns as to kind of what the cost trend is going to be over the next year. And there really are kind of different ways to go in terms of, you know, are we super conservative and and put that large claim number in? Or, you know, take, take a different approach. I think we have some flexibility in that regard, in terms of relationship with the town and some of the insurance mitigations. And so I I think that happy to, you know, kind of leave it in as as what it is, but there's, you know, good chance for some dialogue as we bring our additional partners in in the Board of Finance and and the Town Council to discuss kind of the the numbers behind behind the ISF in a very fulsome way. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. I think it's a good point. Other comments? Jen?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So just quickly, Brendan, thank you again for doing that budget review. That was super helpful. So appreciate all the work you do. And so I just wanted to just comment on what Deanna said. And I totally respect your opinion and I I know there are both sides to this and, you know, the decision that we make is always difficult because some people won't be happy and some people will be happy. Personally, I know that so much time and effort has gone into this effort and so much research and analysis and we have gone to the community and we've been working on this for years and you know, again, I don't think it's ideal to start mid-year, but I also think that we approved it last year, the majority of the board board approved it. And yeah, we're in the middle of a pandemic and it's crazy, but ultimately, you know, in our goals, we're trying to do what's best, what we think is best for the kids and what the research proves and you know, I I do think that if Dr. Letzey and his team think that this, you know, if he's not going to launch it successfully, it's not going to happen, but I I know that they are confident that they can, you know, and I do though, like, you know, hopefully if this does pass, I do think that it would be great to have some type of a date, like when, like, is there going to be a certain timeframe where you're like, okay, you know, yes, this is happening or no, this is not happening. I don't, I don't know if, you know, I don't even know what timeframe we're looking at. Is it going to be January? Is it going to be February? Is it going to be March of twenty twenty two? But you know, just to give people some type of date to look at, if it is going to happen or if it's not, but I do think that it is the right thing. I I fear that if if it gets pulled out of the budget this year, that it's just never going to come back. And, you know, again, we are in a pandemic and it may not be the ultimate time to launch this, but it is the right thing. And I think we should keep it in. But that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Sheri.
Yeah, I I also just want to comment on the start times and I feel strongly and I do, Deanna, I appreciate your your concern so much. I just feel strongly that as a board, we need to lead forward on this issue and there has been a very lengthy and extensive and thoughtful process to get to where we're at now with with the the start times. And I actually believe that now more than ever, it's so important that we lead forward. I think all of the experts are sounding the alarm bells on the pandemic-related mental health issues that are emerging amongst our young people. And so therefore, I think a focus on sleep and student wealth, health, wealth, health and wellness is more important than ever. And I do believe that it's, while it's complicated, I have full confidence in our administration that they can lead on this issue. I do believe that the the proposal that has been put forward is aligned with when everyone learns best. I think it's aligned with the pediatric guidelines. It's aligned with science. And so for those reasons, I feel very strongly that we need to stand firm and support moving forward.
Thank you, Sheri. Julie?
Thanks, Regina. And like Jen and Sheri said, I hear Deanna's concerns and and the uncertainty, of course, is going to be with us for a while. I think what's important is that, you know, as a board, that our job is to look out for the what's best for our kids. And I think, you know, especially during this pandemic, we've we've seen, you know, brought into great relief how important the health and wellbeing of our students you know, are for for them and for their success. And I think that, you know, we, through all the work that we've done over the the years, it's become clear that this is something that would that would greatly benefit our students and and change is hard and there's never going to be an ideal time. And, you know, it would be nice if things fit neatly into a school year calendar, but sometimes they don't. And I think this is one of those cases where, again, Dr. Letzey and the and the cabinet have have decided that the fall would be would be too difficult, but that they have confidence that it could be launched in in the winter. And, you know, like Jen, I think a definite date is really important and that's something that we need to, you know, to be fair to our parents, our teachers. We need to offer that up, you know, as soon as we can. But I do believe this is something that we should keep in the budget.
Thank you, Julie. Bob?
Yeah. On this, on the late start, I think the, in general, I like the idea. I've been pretty vocal. I I definitely want to see the the time get to like an eight o'clock. I think I think the for the younger kids, that is pretty early. And I know there's all kinds. I wasn't here for for most of the for the work. I wasn't here for, yeah, exactly, most of it. But I do believe that, you know, making it a little later for the for the younger kids makes sense to me. I'm not sure sure about starting it in the wintertime when it's actually dark. It's you know, you add those two things together. I don't think that's the best, the best idea, but I'm support, I I hundred percent support the concept, but I don't really support that implementation in the current form. So if we can agree to tweak the times, I would be, I'd be all for it. So that's it on the late start.
Brendan and then Penny?
Yeah, I, you know, I echo some of the comments that were made. Definitely appreciate that. It's not necessarily ideal to start in the middle of the year. But it's also our sort of budget to start of the school year is a really short budget approval to timeline to the start of the school year is also a really short timeframe. This actually gives us a little bit more time, gives parents a little bit more time to plan. So but but more importantly, this is something that the board, you know, made a decision on last year. Unfortunately, you know, the the actions on the town side, you know, forced us to pull it out, you know, this current year. But it's a priority of ours and, you know, particularly in the context of the pandemic, if we can get you know, an extra half or two thirds of the year with kids waking up at all ages at times that are the best for their health and learning, then, you know, we've done a service to all the kids in Ucanan. And I, you know, undoubtedly, there are going to be some significant challenges, you know, in lots of different areas. But you know, I think we're up to the task, you know, as a community and as a district. So I I support it, you know, more broadly support the budget.
Thank you, Brendan. Penny?
So I think that when we, you know, if we include the change to the school start time in the budget with the with the part year implementation, you know, it's only January twenty twenty one, so we have a lot of time to plan and to bring clarity to the details of it and provide it, you know, a sufficient runway for the parents and the staff. And I'm confident in the ability of our talented administration to do that, or I don't think they'd have brought this proposal forward. We've been working on this as a board, you know, for a long time. I don't know if it's three years or a little bit more now. It was unfortunate that the Town Council took this this funding out last year. But I think that we have looked at it and it's based upon the science and the research and what we feel is the best learning atmosphere for our students. What we, the situation we have right now is by no means, I think, the best one that the school district can have. And so I fully support the administration's goal and putting this in and are moving forward with it.
Great. Thank you, Penny. Other comments? I would just add that, you know, oh, Carl, go ahead.
All right, unmuting myself. You know, the only thing I'd I'd add is that and this kind of speaks to some of the the comments that were made in the public comment section in the beginning. I don't want anyone to think that we haven't heard their voices and their concerns. And obviously, there are those are real and they're from a significant portion of the community. But I hope everyone recognized that we've also listened to, you know, there's quite a few voices that of support. And and at the end of the day, it's a matter of of first principles and going back to the what healthcare providers recommend. And so I just think it's, I just wanted to to men, to mention that and to just to assure people that we're not being cavalier. Deanna has been a a great and consistent voice for for the, you know, in in thinking about all the all the issues. And she's well respected on the board and it's been a real benefit to have her, you know, in that role. And I think all of us have, you know, struggled with the decision and and given it our, you know, best faith effort to to try to do the right thing at the end of the day.
Thank you, Carl. I would agree with everything you said. You know, the these are hard decisions to make, especially in these times. And, you know, I find, you know, strength in the in the fact that we've done a lot of work. We've given this a lot of thought. We've had a lot of conversations. We've heard from the community. We know there are differences of opinion and I value and respect those differences of opinion from our community members, from student staff and our board members as well. I, you know, personally, my view is that I fully support the plan that is in place. I think it's a question of timing. And we're faced with this, you know, difficult challenge. I think there are still questions that need to be answered and we still need to fill in the blanks. You know, we're at least a year out from a potential implementation and, you know, I, for those reasons, I I would like to see us plan it forward and include it in the budget. And, you know, continue to think about the conversations and the work that we need to do to reassure and bring everybody along and move move forward in that in that regard. So and, you know, and and all of the other conversations we had tonight, I do fully support this year's budget. It's been a complex year. I look forward to having the dialogue and the conversations with the Board of Finance members and the Town Council. I think it's been very collaborative this year and I really appreciate the time that the Board of Finance members have taken to, you know, work with us and continue hopefully to work with us. And we'd like to bring in, you know, the Town Council and do the same with them very soon. I think it's really important. And I think it just shows the power of, you know, working together and having honest conversations and highlighting the challenges that we all face in our budget this year. So with that, you know, I I fully support and look forward to moving forward with the process after tonight. So thank you. And unless there's any other comments, I think we're ready to take a vote. Okay. So a move to approve is a second read and adopt the budget as the Board of Education proposed budget. All in favor? Please use your raised hand just to make it really clear. Okay, well. Okay, opposed? Oh, gosh, just raise your hand if you're opposed. Okay. So one. All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate the time everyone took to review this budget. Thank you to Dr. Keating and Dr. Letzey and Tracy and the whole team. I know this was a, this was a tough budget to pull together, especially this year with everything else going on.
I just very briefly, just want to say thank you to the board as well, you know, certainly thank you to the administrative team, to you know, Tracy, to Dan, to Roy, to everyone who's been contributing against this point. So this is, this now, as you know, goes from being the superintendent's proposed budget to the Board of Education's proposed budget. And then so tomorrow morning, we'll be meeting with the Board of Selectmen starting at, I think, around eight thirty. They've got a little bit of business to do before that, but then I think we're, I believe we're first up at eight thirty. We will give a a quick overview of the the operating and Brendan, we may actually use the exhibit that you walked us through tonight or or something like that. And we'll go through very quickly. And then we get into capital because Board of Selectmen really, or that board focuses on capital specifically. So we'll be talking that through. If any board member would like to attend to join us, you know, so sometimes people do when they're when they're free. Certainly let me know. I can send you the link or just make sure that you can be, you know, be a be a part of that conversation. And and then we will go to the Board of Finance a week later to continue on. So we will, although it's the Board of Education or the yeah, Board of Education's budget, we will continue our advocacy of that. And you'll have the schedule in advance and you're certainly welcome to join us along the way when whenever you're available and.
Brian, could you just send those those links for every meeting? Because I think, you know,
It's a good idea.
Yeah, just just so if we can make it, we can make it. But if we can't, we can't. But if, as long as we have the link, then we can.
Yeah, you just click it in, even if you just come for a time.
Right.
I'm happy to forward them. I have it and I I meant to forward it earlier and I didn't, but I will.
Great. If you would, if you'll do that to train, then I'll have Jaclyn do it for all of the all the other meetings going forward, just to be consistent.
Perfect. We'll do. Thank you. Okay. Carl, you have a hand raised. Is that intentional?
I do. Yeah, it is intentional. Actually, you know, as we move to the conversations with the with the Board of Finance and with and the Town Council and for Selectmen, it echoes a comment I made earlier. I really think that it would be much clearer this year if we use the the adopted budget from last year and in particular, when we're looking at the eight objects and how they change from current to to our newly adopted budget to see those, I think it's going to be easier to see the progression across those objects in that way. Or another way to do it would be to put the projected in based on the current experience, but also show the budgeted so people have an idea as to, you know, where the projected is relative to the adopted budget directionally. So they they kind of, that'll give a little bit of insight into the COVID impact. I just think it's important to try to present things as simply as possible, so that people are clear on what's going on.
Thank you. I think that's that's excellent feedback, you know, and that because as as we spoke earlier, you know, we budgeted for to run our full program this year, but now we've had to scale that program back. So it looks like an increase just to get back to where our program was on a just move forward basis, whether it's athletics, co-curriculars, all kinds of things. So using the budgeted in this one instance, usually it's projected and that's, you know, makes good sense. And we spend a lot of time doing those projections. But in this instance, we, given the disruption, I think it's a more, it's a more accurate comparison, Carl. So thank you.
Great. Any comments from the public? Move back, see if you could please raise your hand. Anybody would like to speak?
Sorry, I believe Jennifer was the first, so I will.
Thank you again for this opportunity. I guess I'm not surprised, though, highly. Thank you again for this opportunity. I guess I'm not surprised, though highly disappointed. Though the tone of the board has somewhat changed, at least acknowledging those of us that have had concerns, though not, not supporting a start time change, just a healthy one that represents all students. Pediatric guidelines call for 10 to 12 hours of sleep for our youngest through to fifth and sixth grade. That will require our children going to bed at 6:00 PM. That is not possible. You know it. I know it. I don't want to hear they get up early. Come to my house, you'll see my daughter who gets up at eight. 10 to 12 hours. That is the science. You are talking about science and yet you ignore it. I don't understand. I'm not the only one. So in an effort of involving the community, in an effort of really saying that you're for the health and wellbeing of all of our children, forgetting the complexities, somebody please address this to all of us. Secondly, the cost of childcare and the, how hard it is to get is impossible in this town. And quite frankly, you have people losing their jobs right and left. This is not affecting others. It is affecting our community. And you're asking families now at a time when quite frankly, there's more hurt to come to set aside tens of thousands of dollars in potential childcare when nobody knows what's going to happen. We are a dual working family and I'm busting my butt to find a new job for a stable company who couldn't make it. I am not the only one. You, we deserve the sensitivity. We deserve the attention. This was a big deal when this wasn't an issue. And this proves to be a case. And I'm so saddened. I'm shaking. You can't even see me. All of our children deserve this. And I know you say you hear us, but you can't possibly. If you're limiting their ability for after school in fifth and sixth grade, some children not getting home till five o'clock, you're limiting their sleep by not allowing 10 to 12 hours and you're putting additional incredible mental challenges, financial challenges on folks in our community who quite frankly don't deserve and don't need the extra added pressure. So thank you, Deanna, for speaking for all of us on that front. The time is not the same as it was a year ago. There are new challenges and I hope you take that all into effect. And again, thank you, Mr. Notton. You've been a great supporter as well of being in the dark. A child got hit this year with a car on the way to school in the dark. We had ridiculous fights. So anyway, thank you. I'm hoping we can find a good solution. This is not it. It's very disappointing.
James? Okay, James, you.
I'm unmuted. It's hard to follow that impassioned plea up. And I mean, I think you hear it in her voice. You hear it from a number of parents that they, they would like another alternative. You say you, you listen to the parents, you listen to the community, you want a solution that helps others. But since this plan first came out, this schedule first came out in the beginning of January, I would like someone to tell me if that plan has changed at all. If you've taken that into, if you've taken the voices of numerous, numerous parents into consideration, what have you done to address it? If you're just going to push the same exact plan through, I don't know how you can, you can honestly say that you're looking, you're concerned about our feelings, our thoughts, our predicaments, our children. You say you are, but those actions don't seem like they are because frankly, from a year ago, you've done nothing to this plan other than continue to push it forward as is. And I think that's what's truly frustrating numerous parents. You say you're listening, but it doesn't seem like you're listening if you look at what you're doing. If someone, if someone can tell me how the plan has changed, acknowledging the voices of numerous, numerous parents in the community, then I'd like to hear how your plan has changed. I think that's, I mean, I'm just, just frustrated by this whole process, frustrated by, I guess, it just seems somewhat disingenuous to say you're listening when you, when you have the exact same plan you had. I think that's it. I mean, I want to, I want to end off also by thanking, thanking the administration for the work they've done on COVID. I know that it's been a real bear. And to throw this on top, I don't even know how that helps, but I appreciate all your efforts. And I'd rather have the money go to bonuses for the administration than for this. Because this is actually doing damage. I honestly believe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay.
All right. Dr. Letzey, announcements and future business?
Just very briefly, we do have a meeting in a week. Thank you for moving this, these meetings in January. As you recall, we moved them off a week so that we could capture the weekend for the holidays. So at that meeting, we will be able to give some feedback on the meeting with the Board of Selectmen tomorrow morning. And Principal Kaskat from South School is coming to share some, share an update on South School and a couple of pictures about what's going on there. So we can have a window into the elementary. And you may have read, I hope that we have identified and hired a new assistant principal over at South Elementary School. So Zoe Robinson is our new assistant principal. She's been with us for quite some time as our K through eight math specialist. Yes. And maybe, well, we'll have her say hi to the board at a later date. I don't want to commit her without speaking with her first, but make sure she has an opportunity to do that. And of course, many of you know her well, both as parents and board members, as she's shared different presentations with us. So Matt and Zoe are excited to get going as a team and there we have it.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome Zoe. Congratulations. All right. Motion to adjourn. Sheri, second, Jen, all in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.